Public school meeting. I want to welcome everybody that's here tonight and thank you for coming out to this board meeting. I want to especially recognize my nephew, who's a 12th grader, and he's sitting on the front row. So I welcome Josiah. It's something you have to do to graduate. So it's good to have you here, buddy. I'm so proud of you. And I'm glad, was glad to pick you up and have a little time in the car talking tonight. So I'm, tonight, first thing on our agenda is to approve the agenda. And do I hear a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Lord. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurst. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Yes? All opposed? No? All right, motion passes five zero. At this moment, we will have a moment of silence, and those who would like to join me for that, you can do that. And then if you would like to stand with me for the pledge allegiance, we can do the same.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America's citizens, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Thank you. One of the things I failed to mention tonight when we were just talking about approving the agenda was, one of the things you may have noticed is that we've placed the public comment section at the end of our meetings. And the reason why we did that was because we found out, especially at our last meeting, and just how the meeting went extremely long. And these meetings, not only to hear from the public, but we have business we need to get done here on the board. And we ask for informational items to be brought forth. And we have a lot of people that are here tonight from Central Office, and we welcome you as well here tonight. Many, a few of you guys are going to present tonight. So we wanted to make sure we get the, our meeting, agenda accomplished, and then also hear at the end to the public for those who like to stay. So that's the reason why we changed that. Tonight, we'll start off with the board highlights, and I will start tonight with Ms. Lord.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. It's been a little bit since we've been together, and I've, I've been really super busy. I was able to visit three of the, no, I went to all four middle schools while, since we've, we've seen each other. It's almost Ag Science Fair time, so I'm talking lots of kids about doing Ag Science Fair. And then I was also able, as I believe, at least Ms. Hurst was also able to go, to the breakout sessions for the civics classes at Montevideo. And that was fascinating. I had a great time doing that. And then I was also able to attend the, there was a statewide FFA conference that was put on by Broadway High School, and I was able to attend that a couple of weekends ago. And then this past weekend, I spent with FFA members at Virginia Tech at the Hippology. That's not hippos, that's not judging hippos, that's judging horses at Virginia Tech, and had a lot of fun with those students. And then this morning, I attended the Shenandoah Valley Regional Special Ed Committee meeting and was able to learn a whole lot about special ed. And I'd like to thank Chairman Cross for assigning me on that committee because I'm really finding it very rewarding, and it's, it's an awesome committee to be on. So thank you for that. And those are my quick, brief highlights. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lord. Mrs. Hurst?
Thank you. I want to, Ms. Laura already mentioned one of the visits that she made, which is one that I thoroughly enjoyed. We were invited out to a, to observe a civics lesson in Mr. Ship's class out at Montevideo Middle School, and that included a collaboration between him and our ITRT staff. And I just want to highlight the work that our ITRT teachers do. The, the work that went into that breakout session can take hours. Those kinds of lessons take hours to put together, and they, they make the job of a teacher easier in a lot of ways, but they also help teachers bring content and engagement into the classroom. If you're not familiar with what a breakout session is, imagine an escape room, if you've ever been to an escape room, with, with a series of clues and codes that you have to decipher. And I admittedly am not very good at those things, so I was really relieved when we didn't assign, there were a number of adults in the room kind of observing, and I was relieved we weren't assigned, you know, an adult to help a group because I would have not been super helpful in deciphering the clues. But the kids did a great job. You could tell they were engaged and in the content. And I just want to highlight that, you know, we have a lot of collaborations across the county, and that's one of them that's really great. The other thing that I want to highlight is I've been touring our schools slowly but surely, and I'm always fascinated by the history of each of the buildings that we go into. So, you know, when I saw Plains Elementary School, I don't know how many of you are familiar with that building, but a couple of weeks ago, that was my first time out there, and it is a really unique building with unique history. And same thing for Montevideo Middle School. And so I was really impressed in how they're using the space out there and that, just the history of the building. So I'm always impressed with each building's character because there's certainly different characters in each building. So, thanks.
You. Mrs. Cave?
I have two highlights for tonight. One is Ms. Holloway at Elkton Middle School. I had the opportunity to ride a bus with her. She is, she's multi-talented, and so many of our administrators in this division do so many jobs. And it's really, it's just, it's exciting to see that we have people that will jump out of their realm of comfort, if you will, to do something that's needed, and we certainly need bus drivers. But we, we took the bus that had to go up through Thoroughfare Road, which is in Elkton, around through Red Brush, 340, and back home. And it was so fun just to tell Ms. Holloway about, oh, this is my friend's house, my friend's grandma's house, and we rode our bikes from here to there on this road, and just to watch her navigate way back up, you know, in those mountains is just, you know, it was really cool. And she is an asset to Elkton Middle School, and I'm, and I'm sorry if I took that highlight from you. And, no, you, go ahead, I'll, I'll leave the other person to you. So she gets double, double accolades tonight. And then I wanted to highlight my tour at Massanut and Technical Center a couple of weeks ago. Kevin Hutton toured me around for about two hours, and really, I think it probably could have taken three, but we were sort of rushed that day. I had another appointment. But what we teach our kids there, just amazing. I'm so proud to work for a division that offers those kinds of opportunities to our students because we certainly need doctors and lawyers in this world, but we also need tradesmen, electricians, and plumbers, and all of those things that they teach. I remember when I was in school and wanting to go to NTC and learn how to do hair, and there were, I have a few friends that, that did that, and they have successful businesses these days. And I think it's really awesome, and so it was fun to see those girls in there working and, you know, learning makeup and hair and things like that. And the dental assistant program looked really cool. And just knowing that we provide those opportunities, even to hook these, these students up with a job when they get out of school, it's so important. And so it was exciting to see all of the many, many programs that are there, and Mr. Hutton just doing a fabulous job there, and all the staff. So it was exciting to see what our county does for the next generation, really. So those are my highlights.
That's cool. Thank you, Mrs. Cave. Mrs. Burgolyn?
So since our last meeting, I had a couple events planned that I was going to go to, some reading events and a school walkthrough, which I had to cancel. And I joked that I was going to say my highlight was that my kids were sick for the last three weeks. But my highlight is because my kids go to Rockham County Schools, and the, I, I kept sending emails to the office staff, you know, my kid will be there tomorrow, and then she was sick again. So I just want to shout out the teachers, the office staff, the nurse, the nurses at all the schools, specifically at my kid's school. I know I called her several times, and our custodians, because I know kids are getting sick right now like crazy. And my kid has missed several days. So it seemed like every time we were better and back in school, she was sick again. So a huge shout out. I know what a pain I was to my daughter's school, so I know that the, the staff all around are probably feeling that with lots of kids that are sick. So I hope everybody's getting better, and hopefully we're over this just tornado of sickness, I feel like, that's been going through the schools. One thing I did want to shout out was an email from Mr. Alexander from Elkton Middle School. He clearly is very, very passionate and proud of his wrestlers. And so while I was not able to attend or go to anything the past couple of weeks, he did shout out how well our middle schools did. Pence, Elkton, and J. Frank all placed, as well as our high schools as well, in the top three spots. So we had TA, Broadway, and I believe, two of our high schools, yeah, placed in the top five, TA and Broadway. So shout out to them, from Mr. Alexander, who's obviously very proud of his, his kids. So those are my highlights.
Awesome.
Hopefully I'll be able to do my, my visits and more things now that everybody's better. So.
I'm sure you will. Dr. Shiflett?
Thank you, Chairman Cross. Just following along on the, some of this athletics and wrestling, this Friday and Saturday is the state wrestling meet in Salem, Virginia. All four of our high schools will be sending athletes to compete. In total, we have 18 wrestlers who have qualified to compete at the state level. Also, on Saturday is the state swim meet in Richmond, and we have 13 swimmers participating at the, at the, at the state level for swimming, representing East Rock, Spotswood, and TA. And then two weeks from today is the state indoor track meet, and we have 35 athletes from all four high schools who have qualified to participate in the state track meet. And I want to congratulate all these athletes and wish the best of, wished them the best of luck. Also, this month is School Board Appreciation Month, and I want to just briefly say thank you to each of our school board members for their commitment to RCPS and the tireless hours that they invest serving our community. Further, this week is School Board Clerk Appreciation, and I want to thank Caitlin for her hard work and her superior organization skills. I'm not sure I've encountered anyone quite as organized as Caitlin, and she's trying to help me, although it is a challenge for her, I know, but she's, she's trying to make me better at that aspect of my job. So, and also to Brenda, who is our deputy clerk. And finally, I am looking forward to the upcoming musicals. I think later this evening, Mrs. Becky Ford will be presenting on our slate of musicals for this spring, and Katie and I already have our tickets to go see the Addams Family on Friday night. So we're looking forward to that.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. And I'm, I just, again, just want to publicly say, your beard looks really good, and just keep on letting that thing grow out. I think it looks good on you. I'm, do, we, I do want to say thank you, Dr. Shiflett, to you as well for all that you do, and the countless hours that you're putting in, and I'm, thank you, just, I'm, just couldn't be any more proud, gladdered, I don't know what you want to say, but just, just to have you here as our superintendent in Rockham County. So thank you for all that you do. My board highlight tonight is, I also went out and visited Elkton Middle School, and I just really appreciate our administrators and our, our staff and faculty that come out and drive buses for our parents and for our children to be able to get home. I mean, there's so many people, bus drivers are doing double routes, and there's a lot of people that just don't realize how much, even our Director of Transportation and our Supervisor of Transportation, both of them are going out and driving buses to pick up kids. And ultimately, that blesses our parents who have jobs and have to go to work. And so I just want to say thank you so much for all of our staff that are pitching in to do things that you may not see on a daily basis or recognize. But I did go out and had an opportunity to ride the bus with Dr. Holloway at Elkton Middle School, and our, when I got back, I wish I kind of would have rode the bus with Luke Roadcap. He also drives a bus. And Luke's an amazing civics teacher out at Elkton Middle School, and he was an assistant principal and asked to go back to the classroom because he really missed being with the kids in the classroom, and I get that, but he was an excellent administrator as well. But he drove all the way, if you know anything about the eastern side of the county, you have Sandy Bottom and Beldor Holler on the eastern, far eastern, as you're getting ready to go across the Blue Ridge Mountains. And he drove the bus all the way back up into Beldor Holler, and with his point where he turns around, there was a car that was parked and the driver wasn't in it. So he had to back his bus all the way out of Beldor Holler and to a point to where he could turn around, and that is very impressive. And I wish I would have been able to witness Luke and what you did. But I really do appreciate everyone that's driving the bus and helping us out during this time. And this is a little plug for our bus drivers. We are hiring. So if you'd like to, to drive a bus, maybe the DNR can put that in the paper. We are looking for free, maybe just highlight board member Cross tonight, that we're looking for bus drivers. My other two highlights is I wanted to recognize two students tonight, Cam Pacheco and Kane Shiflett. Cam Pacheco is a Spotswood High School varsity, which I'm, we won districts, by chance, if you guys didn't hear, Spotswood Basketball did win districts again this year. And I'm, they're playing tonight, playing in Harrisburg High School, so hopefully they do, they do well. You know they won, right? Okay. So, all right. But Mr. Pacheco, he, a few weeks ago, he scored over 1,000 points, and that's very difficult, and what a great honor that is for Mr., Mr. Pacheco to do that. So I just wanted to publicly congratulate him. Not only that, but he's a great young man. My son, who's an eighth grader at Montevideo, told me when we went and watched one of the basketball games there this year, he said, Dad, he said, that, that kid right there, he said, he was very nice and a very kind kid. He said, I came over to workouts, and he always helped me out and just was very kind to me. So I sent him an often, I sent him an email and said, thank you. Congratulations, and thank you for being so kind to my son. And then Kane Shiflett at East Rockingham High School. Kane, I taught as a, I was his coach in Little League, and to see Kane grow up and to be a thousand-point scorer at, at East Rock. East Rock has a lot of talent, had a lot of talent on that team, but when you know, when you have one of the greatest athletes in basketball to come through, you kind of get lost in the midst of, of all that. But there's some great athletes at East Rock, and Kane, I'm real proud of you as well, just a young man that you are, and hopefully you'll get to see this tonight, and congratulations on that. So that will conclude our school board highlights tonight, and we will go into our action items. And the first on our action items tonight is to approve the minutes. Can we approve the minutes for the January 22nd and January 30th? Do I hear a, a motion to approve those minutes?
I move we approve the minutes from January 22nd and the minutes from January 30th as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Lord. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Cave. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Yes? All opposed? No? Motion passes five oh. Next on our list tonight is bills and mileage, and I believe, Dr. Shiflett, you have a recommendation on that.
Chairman Cross and members of the board, I recommend that you pay the bills and mileage because my goodness, my bull box is out.
That's all right. That's all right. Y'all have, y'all a little slow. Okay, no problem. Everybody had a chance to look at that tonight and see anything that, having questions, comments on? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the bills and mileage as presented?
You go ahead. I move we follow the superintendent's recommendation and pay the bills.
Thank you, Mrs. Lord. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Burgolyn. Any questions or comments concerning the bills and mileage? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Yes? All opposed? No? Motion passes five oh. Next on our list tonight for action items is field trips. And do you, can you see that, Dr. Shiflett? It's okay. I can get on my phone, possibly.
Field trips for your approval.
I have them.
I forget what they are, but I did read them.
He hasn't.
Chair, Chair Carlson, board members, I have several field trips for your consideration. Wilbur S. Pence Middle School, the FCCLA State Leadership Conference, April 11th through 14th, 17 students to Virginia Beach. Montevideo Middle School, FCCLA State Conference, April 11th through the 14th, six students to Virginia Beach. Massanut and Technical Center Ag Production, February the 23rd to the 24th, three students, Virginia, Virginia Tech. East Rockingham High School, Tech Ed, March 18th through the 20th, 10 students to Smith Island, Virginia. And then Broadway High School, Tech Ed, March 18th through the 20th, 12 students to Smith Island. And I do recommend approval of these field trips.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Hearing the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion to approve field trips?
I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the field trips as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurst. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Burgolyn. Any questions or comments on field trips? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Yes? All opposed? No? Motion passes five oh. Next on our action items tonight is the school safety and coordinator position, and Dr. Shiflett, I think that you also have this. Can you pull that up? You want me to talk for a second? I do appreciate, I do appreciate this position. This is a position that, one of the biggest reasons why I got into wanting to be a school board member was to make sure this position as would get into our division because in 2010, I don't know, I believe everyone that's old enough to remember, but in 2010, we had the massacre in Newtown, Connecticut. And Governor Bob McDonnell was the governor of Virginia at the time, and one of the things he did is he put together a school safety task force. And on that task force, they listed on there, one of the top priorities that every division in the state of Virginia and the Commonwealth should do would be to add a school safety manager towards every division. Now, some divisions throughout the state, they went ahead and hired a full-time professional that had public safety, law enforcement backgrounds, and they were directors over those positions. In many divisions, just like Rockham County, we put that important position on top of someone else's shoulders within a division, and they've done a great job. And this, I always want them to know, it was our transportation officers that, that do that position at the moment. But it's another added position on top of their shoulders of what they have to do job-wise. And so being a school resource officer for almost a decade within our division, I saw how important it was to have that school safety manager position to keep our schools, our division accountable, and also to do better at safety within our schools. And so this important, this position is very important, and I believe it's going to add an extra layer, huge extra layer protection to our schools. Because you understand that the school resource officers, they can't tell our employees what to do unless they break the law. They're not there to tell them, hey, you should do this or do that. They're there to make sure the students and the staff are safe throughout the day, and they do a great job at doing that. But a safety manager can do a lot of different safety things within our division that need to get done, and we can do a better job at safety within our division. So I'm excited about bringing this position to the county, and do you got that pulled up now?
Yes, or Chair, Chair Carlson, board members, a draft job description for a potential school safety and security coordinator position was presented at the January 22nd meeting as information for review and consideration. It is now being presented for action to be included in the 2425 fiscal year budget. I do recommend approval of the school safety and security coordinator position.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Do I hear a motion to, for this position?
I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the school safety and security coordinator job description as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Cave. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurst. Any questions or comments on those? Maybe you have any comments you may want to add?
I just wanted to encourage you in, well, and really to thank you for pushing for this position. Even, I think it was back in March of last year, I visited with the Government Club at Spotswood High School, and they're just an extravagant group of students, very wise. And we actually talked about a position of school safety and security coordinator because they even, at their age, saw, I guess, limitations of school resource officers in, in what they do, and having this position is going to create accountability amongst our school staff that we can make sure that schools are truly safe. And they pointed out some things that, you know, the resource officer wouldn't necessarily tend to, but a security coordinator would. And so it was interesting to me to see students see the need. And so thank you for pushing for this, and, and I'm happy to be a part of the board to, to see it come to fruition because I know you've been talking about it for a while. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cave. This is a very important position for me, and I want to thank you guys as a board for also seeing the need for this position within the county. And I also want to thank Dr. Shiflett as well, because one of the things that he said when he first came on that was safety was number one on one of his priority lists for the division, and he's done that so far within a division. His first 100 days, one of the cool things that he did was, I forget the name of the app, you have to help me out on that, but Stop It App that, that he put out there, and Josiah, have you used the Stop It app yet? Yeah? Okay, it's out there, you can use it. But if you see something, say something type thing, and I'm, what I've heard so far is that that app has done a great job in helping out with all kinds of things within our schools. So thank you for taking it serious and doing all this. Do you want any other board comments? All right, do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation? All right. Do, thank you for reminding me of that, and we had a second, and now it's on the vote. All those who are in favor, say yes. Yes? All that are against, say no. Motion passes five oh. All right, next on our list tonight is Student Conduct Discipline Committee. Dr. Shiflett?
At the previous two meetings, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Alderfer presented on student conduct in RCPS. At the request of the school board, a committee is being formed to review our current student conduct and discipline policies. This committee will report back to the school board with recommendations for changes to our current policies. I recommend approval of the Student Conduct Committee as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett, for doing this, and I'm really looking forward to this going forward for our division. Hearing the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Mrs. Burgolyn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Cave. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Yes? All against? No? Motion passes five oh. Next on our list tonight is policy revisions. And Dr. Shiflett says that your name is on that as well. We have a number of revisions. Many of the revisions that you see that are on there tonight are policies that we needed to tweak and to look at when we passed. Yeah, I know, you can go on the website and look at that if you'd like to. But all the policy revisions that we do have, that, many of them that you'll see there tonight are ones that, when passing Governor Youngkin's policy in full, we need to go back and check our policies and make sure it didn't contradict one another. So that's what you'll see there on the agenda tonight as well.
Chair Carlson, board members, the following policies were submitted for review and consideration at the January 22nd, 2024 meeting. I recommend approval of the proposed policy revisions as presented. That's Policy AD, JFHB, JB, BDDH, and JO-A.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. I'm hearing his recommendation. Do I hear a motion to approve that recommendation?
I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the proposed policy revisions as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurst. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you, Mrs. Cave. Any questions or comments on this? I do want to, I do want to mention two of them. One was the public comment period that we've done and we've looked into is, it was really important for us to be able to, to make room for residents and those who are residents of Rockham County in our policy and to recognize that because what others are looking and saying outside of our division, they need to go toward their public schools. It's important for us to hear from our community, and so that was important for us to, to go ahead and pass it in there. And the other, the other one was JOA, and in that policy there, there was some wording in there that kind of made us feel a little bit uncomfortable when it came to parental rights. when it came to parental rights. And so, we wanted to make sure that that policy reflected that the parents are in complete knowledge of what's happening with their children. And there was a little bit of question in there. And so, we wanted to be very clear on that policy. And so, I think we did a great job of winning this for parents and making sure that they're going to know exactly what's going on with their children. There's no gray area. We don't like the gray area when it comes to parental rights. And so, that's one of the reasons why we chose that. I'm hearing the second. Any other questions that we have tonight on these policies? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Yes, all those favored, all those against, say no. Did you say yes, Ms. Lord, didn't hear you? Okay, all right, that passes five oh. Sorry, wasn't being anything, I just wanted, I didn't hear you, sorry. Next on our list tonight is the real estate textbook adoption.
There is no on the website, I don't see that. We don't see the doc on the website.
Come on up, it's not, it's, come on up. Come on up, you're fine, you're fine.
Chair Carlson, school board, Dr. Shiflett, thank you for the opportunity to bring to you the Real Estate Textbook Adoption Committee. Those names should be in board docs for you to review. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Chair Carlson, board members, I recommend approval of the proposed Real Estate Textbook Adoption Committee as presented by Carrie Gray, Supervisor of CTE.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Hearing the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion to approve that recommendation?
I move, we follow the superintendent's recommendation for the approval of the Real Estate Textbook Adoption Committee as presented by Carrie Gray.
Thank you, Mrs. Lord. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Burglone. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Gray, go ahead.
I was just wondering if you could share a little bit about the real estate course, where it's, where it's at, who can take the class courses, what it sets you up for. Is this at MTC?
No, it, the, excuse me, the course is currently being offered at East Rockingham High School this year. But any student in the division and any of the four high schools could register to take the course. That's the school that had enough demand for the course to be offered. It's been very successful. It's currently being taught by a licensed Realtor. And so, he had the expertise and knowledge to pull together materials. And so, there was enough interest in other schools that were looking to adopt a textbook to have more resources for teachers that don't have that training. Students are then, the course is intended for them to then be able to take the licensure exam once they turn 18. You can't take that until they're 18, but it's meant to prepare them for that.
So they could be licensed as a real estate agent afterwards? Okay, cool, very cool.
That is cool.
How long is the course?
It's a year long.
A year long, okay.
Thirty-six weeks.
One credit?
Yes.
One, okay. elective?
Yes, it's taught in our marketing department.
Gotcha, thank you.
And those still have to go to Richmond and take a test, right?
Yes, yeah, we don't offer the exam because we can't offer it to all of the students. So they would have to take the exam on their own time.
It's a tough exam.
Yeah, it's uneasy. Our hope is this helps better prepare them and gives them the time and energy to devote to that study.
Absolutely.
It's been, it's been popular, it's been a good opportunity.
It's a great idea, it's great. Any other questions or comments for Ms. Gray?
I'm just curious, because I think this is something I would have loved to have done at high school. Do you, when you have all these students going and testing, do you, do we provide transportation for them and get them together as a group? Or they just have to go individually?
No, the tests would be on their own individually. Because you may have an 11th grader that's 16 or 17 years old taking it. And so, they would need to wait until they turn 18.
Could you just put this in the back of your mind? But if you come across any kids that are having a tough time getting down to Richmond to take that test, to let the board know?
I will.
This, it would just be good to know.
Absolutely.
All right, any other questions or comments? Thank you for doing this. We're excited about it. Hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Yes, all against, no. This motion passes five oh. Thank you so much, Mrs. Gray. Next on our action item tonight is bid recommendations for the HVAC controls at South River Elementary and, was it Lacy?
Linville.
Linville.
Chair Carlson, Dr. Shiflett, members of the board. This evening, I bring to you the bid for HVAC control replacement at South River Elementary and Linville Edom Elementary. We had two firms respond, we sent it to about seven different firms. Our recommendation is to award the contract to the low bidder, Riddle Burger Brothers, in the amount of $61,263.
Chairman Carlson, board members, I recommend awarding the contract for the replacement of the HVAC controls at South River Elementary School and Linville Edom Elementary School to the low bidder, Riddle Burger Brothers, as presented by Steve Reed, Director of Maintenance.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. School board members, hearing Dr. Shiflett's recommendation, do I hear a motion to approve that recommendation?
I move to approve the recommendation by the superintendent. Sorry, I don't have a computer.
You're fine, no. Thank you, Mrs. Burglone. Do I have, do I have a second?
Yeah.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurst. Any questions or comments, Mr. Reed, while we have him standing here with us tonight? Go ahead, Ms. Cave.
How many bids did you get for this? How many bids did you get for this? You got to, I thought you said two. And you're probably not allowed to say publicly who the other company was.
The other company was Southern Air out of Lynchburg.
Southern Air, okay, all right. Do we ever use them, or do we always use Riddle Burger?
We have our general service contract with Riddle Burger. We bid that out every five years.
Okay.
We have had Southern Air do a few projects for us, some rooftop replacements. We've had Moore's Electrical and Mechanical a few years ago, did about a million dollars' worth of chiller replacements for us.
Okay.
So, Riddle Burger is a company that we use regularly. However, they are not exclusively the company that we use.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Mr. Reed, but I know you're also great at explaining this. Might be a good time to walk us through the process of how this, and how this process works and how you bid it out and who you, kind of who you send it to, if you would, please?
Yeah, so typically, if we have a project that's going to be over $60,000, we project it being over $60,000 per board policy, we do a sealed bid, okay? In mechanical bids, we have a list of contractors in the office. I've listed a couple of them. Blau Brothers here in Harrisonburg is another one that we send to. I don't know the others off the top of my head, but there's a list of seven or eight that we send to every time. We also put it on the school, the school website as advertised. And we'll send those bids out, receive the sealed bids. And again, a sealed bid is we bring, get them in these envelopes. And at the time specified, we'll open them up and read them aloud so that there's no chance for anybody saying, well, I can do that a little less. And then we'll evaluate it. If it's a company we haven't used before, of course, we'll check the references. If it is a company that we have used before and had good results with, we'll bring that directly to the board at that point. If it's a company we've used before and had some not-so-good results with, we will talk to them about that. We cannot eliminate them just for those not-so-good results. They have to be debarred by the state for us to be able to eliminate them. But then we'll talk to them and we'll express our concerns. We'll set some parameters and then we'll bring it for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Yeah, thank you.
And in this case, I believe it was about a $7,000 difference.
Yes.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say yes. Yes, all opposed and no. Motion passes five oh. Mr. Reed, we also have you here for one more action item tonight, and that is the keyless entry system installation.
Yes, and as Mark Klosensky comes up to be with me here, I want to start out by thanking the members of the evaluation committee. If you may recall, a few meetings ago, it may have been even last year, the board approved bidding this out as a request for proposal rather than a sealed bid. So the request for proposal enables us to evaluate the proposals that are given to us, not just on the price, but on other set parameters, such as ability to perform the work, the product that they're presenting, and those types of things. When we asked for that permission, we also asked for permission for the evaluation committee. And again, I want to thank that group that included Matt Rickard, which was Coordinator of Network Services, Emily Holloway, Principal at Elkton Middle School, Kevin and Chad Dothmeyer, Supervisors of School Resource Officers. We started out with Kevin, and then Kevin went on leave, so Chad stepped in. So both of those officers were part of this. Justin Moyer, Chief Financial Officer, Doug Alderfer, Assistant Superintendent, Mark Klosensky, Maintenance Facilitator, and myself. Step one up, Mark, if you want to.
Come on up here, Mark. It's good to see you, man.
The request for proposal was properly advertised and specified. We sent the RFP to eight offers. We received three semitals. The committee reviewed all the proposals, and then all three vendors visited seven schools for a site visit. Elkton Elementary, Riverbend, McGaquisville, Elkton Middle, Montevideo Middle, East Rockingham, and Spotswood High Schools. The three vendors then updated and resubmitted their proposals. And the committee reviewed and rated all three vendors. You can see the ratings below from each evaluator. As you can see, the evaluations ranged from 542 points to 619 points. The cost for the systems that were presented ranged from $1,476,821 to $1,47,959. Our recommendation is to award the keyless entry system installation to the highest-rated offerer, which was Hawk Security from Harrisonburg, Virginia, with 619 points.
Chairman Carlson, board members, I recommend awarding the contract for the keyless entry system installation to the highest-rated offerer, Hawk Security, as presented by Steve Reed, Director of Maintenance.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Board members, hearing the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion to follow that recommendation?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurst. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Burglone. Any question or comments? I'm sure we may have a few here tonight. Go ahead, Mrs. Hurst.
I have a couple of questions.
There you go.
I'm going to learn this technology yet. How many, so the proposal, you visited only a certain number of schools, but this proposal and this amount for the bid, that's to cover all of the schools in Rockingham County?
That is for all of our schools. It does not include MTC.
Not MTC, they're separate, okay. And how do you, I'm assuming, is it every door in every building? It is?
There's about 215 total within the division. And here's where I'm going to pull out some notes. We did have an evaluation.
Two fourteen.
Two fifteen. I had a deer that wanted to commit suicide on my way here this evening, and I had to hit my brakes and papers went flying, so, here we go. So, the determining factors for the keyless entry at the elementary and middle schools were the main entry to the building, which was one at the outside door, and then one on the inside secure vestibule doors, the delivery access for the loading dock to the kitchen, entry near the employee parking areas, which could be multiple, entry used for student pickup drop-off for the parents, entry used for the student pickup for bus dropping off and picking them up, access to playground areas, and exterior student teacher pathways from door to door. Some of the schools, Hilliard Middle School, from the new wing, they routinely go out the back and then into a corridor that's behind the gym. So they travel that routinely. So those doors would have this in it also. These same determining factors were a factor in high schools also. Mark also met with all of the high school principals and athletic directors and talked about the high-usage doors at those schools that they would use for athletics at those buildings, and they were included. So that's how they were determined. It was about, like I say, it wasn't about, it was 215. Originally, we started, when we first started talking about that, we were about 140. So we added about 50% more doors after we got into it a little bit further.
So you're saying that 215 is the number of doors that will get the keyless entry?
That's correct.
Okay, gotcha.
I do have some questions. So which doors are not getting it? So I'm just clear.
The doors that are included on the list.
Right, right, like, aren't we talking like the closet where the custodial things are kept? Things like?
You may have that, you may have a door that is, let's see.
I just, you know, our hospital uses things like this.
John C. Myers.
Mm-hmm.
The door that exits out of what was the breezeway to the east, that's not getting any, that's not a door that's used typically by the teachers to go in and out. But the two in the back, they are. The three in the front, they are, yeah.
Okay, and is there any plan to do all the doors?
No.
No, okay.
No.
Just, the reason I'm asking, you know, like, our hospital uses keyless entry for secure areas, all of our government buildings. So that was my concern. Obviously, I'm super big on public safety and school safety. I would love to see every door, maybe not, you know, the?
Well, with the plans with this, is that it will eliminate the need for your teachers and staff to carry exterior keys.
Right.
They will have access through the keyless swipe. Your administration and maybe your custodial staff will still have master keys. This is just the first step.
Okay.
Once, once we get this done, we will be evaluating exterior doors at the schools to see which doors need to be rekeyed, which schools need exterior doors rekeyed. If we have a school that we feel we have good exterior door key control, and we know where they're at, then we may not rekey that exterior of that building. But if we have one that is questionable, then we will rekey the exterior doors to that building.
So some exterior doors will still remain with a key?
All doors will still be able to be opened by a key.
So key and keyless entry?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, all doors will still be able to be opened by the key. That's why rekeying is part of this process.
When, when I was running for school board, a teacher had mentioned to me, because this is something that I care very deeply about. And I've, I've subbed, I've seen how long it takes to get into a classroom. And that seconds matter, especially for our sheriff's office, who's responding to emergencies. So one thing that was brought to my attention was the quality of the door. And I know, I think at Wilbur Pence, they've got some old wood doors where it doesn't matter if there's a lock. So just something to keep in mind that while we're putting these great, you know, keyless entries on here, if I can kick the door down myself, right? And I'm not a very strong woman, but if I could kick it down, there's kind of no reason to have a keyless entry there, so.
As you, as you know, all four of our middle schools were converted high schools. All four of our middle schools have the situation that you have described.
Just to be clear, these are all external?
These are all exterior doors, yes.
So none of the, none of the classrooms are getting rekeyed at this point?
And for the 215 doors, we're looking at over a million dollars to do the keyless entry for those 215. That gives you a little scale.
Do you happen to have a number of doors that we did not cover?
Not off the top of my head, no.
Okay.
I would say, and I looked through the, through the book again this morning, and doors that are not into a mechanical room, doors that are not into a janitor's closet, the exterior doors that are not into, say, I don't know, an ag shop, tech ed shop, there's probably one or two doors that are not that at each school that is not getting the keyless entry. And again, it depends on the layout of the school and what doors are used by the faculty and staff routinely.
Right, I was just thinking specifically, and I'm sorry to prolong this, but McGaquisville Elementary, like, was one?
Mark, bring me the map.
There's a door where, that goes into the gym, and then there's like a door up the sidewalk there. And so, they're very close, but in a panic, maybe they came out the gym door, but students panicked and they went to run for the other door. Like, are both of those doors covered?
The doors that were identified at McGaquisville.
Thank you.
The main entry? The interior vestibule? No, I'm sorry, I've got the wrong, the wrong school here. But it is the main entry in the vestibule. Okay. The door at the bus loop?
Okay.
Okay, the door at the back, the small parking lot? The other door on the other side that faces the church? The door that goes? The door that goes into the kitchen. The door that goes into the back hallway off of that parking lot. The door that is in the front hallway beside the gym, not the gym door, but the door into the hallway beside the gym. And then the door in the corridor that's between the two wings that come out, the classroom wing and the multipurpose. If you can picture that in your mind, if not,
I can.
I can show you a picture.
Thank you.
We're excited about this and appreciate you guys taking the time to do this.
It became a lot of questions on how to actually approach it. And it took us a while to answer all of those questions. Even on what type of systems we were going to use. The three systems were similar but different in what was proposed by the three vendors.
And will this be finished by the start of next school year, or?
That is the intent of the bid.
Okay. And obviously, the interior doors for the classrooms, that is something that we would like to look at, are going to talk about in the future. I'm going to talk about it.
Certainly.
But I guess something cost-wise, we couldn't do right now.
Right. Those are fairly large ticket items, I think. And I don't have the numbers off the top of my head. We had priced, I think, Hilliard at one point, Elkton Middle at one point, and replacing those doors. It becomes a situation where just replacing the door does not give you anything. You've got to replace the door and the frame.
Right.
And those frames, they're very large, and they got transom above them. And a lot of those transoms actually go above what the drop ceiling is there now. So it's quite a detailed project, and it is an expensive project if we get to that point.
Okay.
Definitely something to look into as we're looking at a safety manager position and seeing the safety of our schools going forward. Any other questions, comments?
The money for this project is allocated in this current budget?
Thank you, Justin.
Wonderful. Okay, great. Thank you.
And while we got you up here, I appreciate you all being coaches here in RCPS. And I really do, really appreciate the time you put in and all the help you guys give our students here in Broadway. So thank you, guys. And I hate that you beat us last year, but congratulations, you did it. But any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Okay, I don't want to beat a dead horse, I'm sorry.
You're fine, you're fine.
But I also don't want to forget about MTC. I mean, I know that that's a different animal, but I do really care about that school, and I hate that they're not included. I know that that's a city-county thing, and funding and all that is a whole nother question, but I would love to see that out there as well, because that's a huge campus, so.
Absolutely.
I just want to throw that out there, because I don't want to leave them out.
Nope.
MTC is very unique. It's more of a campus school. So yeah, it would be a lot of doors that would need to be addressed there.
Okay. All right. Hearing the superintendent's recommendation, all those in favor say yes? Yes? All opposed, no? Motion passes, five oh. Thank you, guys, so much for bringing us tonight and all the information. We are going to take a five-minute recess before we get into our informational items, so we'll be back in five minutes.
Shout out to you. Hey, guess what? Hey, guys, how are y'all?
Absolutely. Shano, hey, we're glad y'all came up, I was wondering.
That's it, that's it? We all, we all? How are you, really? Good. Are you from T.A. Park?
No.
What are you doing today? Hey. What's up, big guy? How are you, man? Nice to meet you all too, good school, you did ten minutes. Y'all playing sports? I can deal, I think you're getting ready to do it. Yeah, yeah, we're not cheating, I don't need to. Hey, that's good. You know you do that. Thank you so much. Yes. I'll get up with you. Got some phone calls, I'm crazy. Thanks. Absolutely. Thanks. What's going on, big guy? How are you? Good, we just did that. Who? Oh, man, I'll be watching you, motherfucker. That's what I'm playing for the graduate class here. What you're, okay. I'll be playing. You have some good hits too, bro. We all just do it. Alright. What are you doing next? College? College, aren't we? Aren't you going to be tall? Not sure, it's fine? It's going to stay in mom's day later, right? It could be like fifth or eighth in the tournament, going in. Where'd y'all see it? Y'all, y'all remember one another? Y'all remember one another in a country? Yeah. A little. I'll just call them.
All right, thank you for that break. As we get ready to go into our informational items tonight, where I'm really excited to hear from quite a few of these speakers tonight, they're going to be bringing the board information. So thank you for taking the time to come out. And I have told your boss that after you're done speaking, it's okay if you go home. Whether he's relayed that message to you, I don't know. But Ms. Abernathy's like, great. But we want to honor your time as well. So Ms. Abernathy and Dr. Correll Clark, would you all come on up and talk to us about EL?
Good evening, Chairman Croll, school board members. Dr. Shiflett, thank you for providing this opportunity for Dr. Correll Clark and I to present to you all this evening some information about our EL, our English Language Learners Program in our school division. And so thank you for having us tonight. And also, I want to thank some of our EL teachers that came out tonight as well in support of what they do. They truly love what they do and love our students. So before we get started with the presentation that we have for you that has a lot of data in it, before you, Dr. Correll Clark, put together a proposal, you should have this in front of you, I believe. And this is a lot more detailed information than what's on our presentation. So when you have a moment, you can take a look and go through that information as well. But that's for you to look at at another time. So we do have a brief slideshow for you. The first slide for us to look at is the Division five-year enrollment data, and this is as of last week. So I put last week's date on it because this literally changes on a daily basis. Every day, we have new students moving into Rockingham County because they know how awesome we are. So they're always coming into our school division. So this is the last five years. Did you can see our total number of students in Rockingham County schools, our number of EL students served, and our EL served percentage as well. So we've gone from 8% from five years ago to 13% of our EL served percentage. Right now, we're at about 1,500 EL served students in the school division. When you add in our monitored students, we're at about 1,900. That's about an additional 400 students that we monitor as well, but they're not part of the served population. Dr. Correll Clark can talk about what that means here in just a moment. The next slide is data from our Fall Verification Report. So this is a report that goes into the state in October of every year. And these are the six schools where we see the most EL population and the most growth in our EL population. So you'll see the RS is receiving services, and then again underneath that is the monitored EL students as well. I'll just point out a couple of them. You can see there with Cub Run, when we started, what, six, seven years ago, 2016? That's when Dr. Correll Clark came into this position in central office. So we had 95 students receiving services. Then a few years ago, we go to 170, and now we're at 243. So you can see how drastic the changes have been in Cub Run. Also, you can look at Montevideo. We've gone from 42 students receiving services to 43 to 101, just in a few years. Wilbur Pence, from 30 to 43 to 93, as well as our monitored students. So you can see that we've experienced much rapid growth in our EL population. Because of the growth that we've experienced, we certainly have increased our EL staffing. So you can see in the last four years, we had about 24 teachers in our EL staffing. And then this school year, we're up to 42. So we haven't quite doubled our EL staffing, but we have increased with many EL teachers to our school division. You'll see the tutor hours per week. As we increased our teachers, we've certainly decreased the tutor hours that we needed, and as well as our EL assistants. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Correll Clark, and she's going to share about future trends and priorities that we're looking in our, for our EL population.
Thank you, Ms. Abernathy. So in putting this together, I looked at the past, the number of students we had in the past, the teachers, where we are now, and what the future might look like in order to come up with a proposal that took everything into consideration. I spoke to the Planning Commission as to what their plans were for the future construction. And according to their master plan, Carver's Valley has a total of 400 houses that they're planning on doing. Pleasant Valley is 337. Park Church Road, 723. And that is going to affect us a great deal. And that's not something that we're talking about in 10 years from now, but fairly soon. Based on predictive equation using regression, by the end of 2024, we're looking at an increase of 232 students. From September till last week, we had already seen an increase of about 150 EL students just in that short amount of time. By the end of 2024, we're looking at an increase, an additional increase of 360. By the end of 2026, it's an additional 550. So when you put it all together, we're talking about an increase of 1,142 just in the matter of about two, three years. Adding that to our current numbers, we're looking at about 2,642. Adding the monitored students, we're looking at close to 3,000 students in just a matter of about three years. That is double where we are right now. We're increasing at a very, very rapid rate. Again, taking all of this into consideration, talking to parents, students, and teachers, I kind of put something together that addressed all the different needs. And I came up with three priorities. I didn't want to be greedy, so I just put two for next year and then one for the following year. So one of the first priorities would be four liaison positions, and they would be bilingual. The languages that they would be bilingual in was determined by the percentage of students that we have in Rockingham County. Our top languages, of course, other than English, are Spanish by about 85%. Then you have Russian and Ukrainian and Arabic. So with that, I would like to request four liaison positions. Two, that would be Spanish-speaking, one Arabic or Russian, and then one, I'm sorry, one Russian or Ukrainian, and then one Arabic. They would be working with all of our parents, regardless of what language they speak or how long they've been here. It's every single Rockingham County parent that needs help, they would be there to help them. And I'll talk a little bit more about some of their duties. The other priority would be to hire seven teachers for the Elementary Newcomer Program, two for the Broadway area, two for the T. Turner Ashby area, and then three for the Spotswood and the East Rock area, because they would be combined. Okay. And then, as you can see from this page, this gives you a little bit of a picture as to what the other school divisions have in relationship to liaisons. We are the only school division that does not currently have a liaison. And we are the second biggest school division around. The first one is Harrisonburg, and we're number two with, as of last week, I have no doubt that it has increased by now. We had 1,501 students. Okay? And again, if you add the monitored students in there, we have around 1,900 students. And the reason why I keep saying monitored is because we still have to, we're still responsible for those monitored students for four years after they exit the program. And there's a lot of things that the teachers are still responsible for doing with the students in order to make sure that they are successful in school. Pardon me? Around 400. So the next slide has the liaison duties. And again, I just want to emphasize again that the liaisons would be working with every single Rockingham County parent that would need extra support. They would help with things such as applying for free introduced lunch for the schools that do not have all students receive that. That can be a little hard for some people, so they would be there to help them. They would provide help with community resources if somebody needs them. They would also provide additional support with the access test, which is what the EL students have to take. Every year, they have to take the access test, so they could help with all of that, with registration, and any, really, anything extra that the parents need or the teachers would need also. We have a fairly high percent of dual-identified students that are sped in EL, so they would be crucial with that also. Okay? Another thing that they would help with would be working with work-based learning facilitators to try and find, provide work-based learning experience for our students that want to go that route. Okay? Okay. The next priority would be the newcomer program for the elementary level. We actually have several schools that do not have a full-time or a, really, a TEL teacher at all in there. So when it comes to the newcomer program, all those schools that you do not have anybody, do not have a teacher, or just have a tutor, they would go to the newcomer program. If a, the school only has one part-time or one full-time teacher, then again, we would transfer the newcomer students there, which would be, we are Level One and Two, which means that they haven't been in the United States. which would be WEATA Level One and Two, which means that they haven't been in the United States very long. And then for the schools that have multiple teachers, it would be up to the discretion of the school to decide if they want to keep the newcomers in their school and provide the services there, or if they would want them to go to the newcomer program. The suggestion would be grades three to five, that they would be the ones that would go to the newcomer program. The length of time that they would spend on the newcomer program would really depend on their academic background. It could be anywhere from three months, six months. It really would vary depending on the student. Okay? And priority number three, this actually is very needed, even now. This would be a newcomer program for the middle and the high school students. We currently have students that are coming to us that are seventeen years old, eighteen years old, nineteen years old, with very little or no academic background. So, to place them in Algebra I as their first class, as their first class in a school setting, it's a little daunting. So, the, the plan would be that the liaisons would actually help with that. At the time of registration, the liaison would evaluate the student, decide which track they would go on. If they have the academic background, that they would need to be successful in school and graduate with a diploma on time, then they would just be in the newcomer program, just enough time to get them your basic math, reading skills, computer skills. If it's a student that does not have the academic background and would likely age out before they would be able to get a diploma, then they would go on a different track where they would get them the basic reading, writing, math, computer skills, and get them ready either for a GED or workforce. An alternative to a GED would be to work with a Mexican consulate who I've been in touch with. They are actually willing to provide all the materials needed for every, any Spanish-speaking students, regardless of what Latin American country they're from, work with them and get them a diploma from Mexico. Again, regardless of where they're from, as long as they speak Spanish. They would provide the, the resources, we would provide the teachers and the location. So, those are the priorities that I wanted to present to you. I feel that those are very important in order for us to be able to provide the tools that our students need in order to be academically successful. And then, I already said that. So, then we have one final one. This is from our graduating class from TA saying, "Thank you for everything you do. This is the American dream, to be able to find success and be able to do whatever it is you want to do when you graduate from high school." Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for us?
Okay.
Teachers that are here with us tonight, thank you from the bottom of our hearts for what you do for our students.
We have a wonderful group of people.
I know. And y'all pour out your hearts to these kids, and I thank you so much for what you do. And I'm, we're hoping to help get more, get you more help. But thank you from the bottom of our hearts for what you do for our EL students. I'm sorry, made me get emotional there, but it does cheer me up because I know I am personally, the struggles that a lot of our kids go through. And I'm, for them just to make it through the school year sometimes is difficult. I do have a question tonight. When you talked about, for the students that show up that are older, that it's going to be tough for them to get their GED, but they're having to come to school because it's the law that they be here. What was something, what, what kind of CTE can we provide? Have you thought about anything like CTE programs or any workforce things we could do at MTC or anything like that for these students to provide them a trade or something valuable to them? So, when they, if they're only with us two years or three years, and the GED may not be an option where they can even get their GED or qualified for their GED, is there anything that you've thought about that we could do with CTE that could help out these students?
Well, the number three priority, number three addresses that. If we could work with the workforce, Mr. Jod and Mr. Baylor, and trying to get them a, you know, a work experience there. And also for the ones that are not able to get a GED, because it's really hard to get your GED, even if English is your one and only language. So, if they have, if they are Spanish-speaking, then we do have that option of possibly getting them a diploma from Mexico. Again, it doesn't, they don't have to be Mexican, as long as they speak English. Then, my hope would be that maybe other countries have something similar that we can work with so that we can provide similar opportunities for other, for people from other countries.
And can you explain what would be the benefit of them getting, receiving a diploma from Mexico, living here in America, but what kind of benefit would that give them?
They can still go to college.
Okay.
They will still be able to go to Blue Ridge or another college with that.
Okay. Okay.
So, that, that gives them more options.
Okay.
Because there's a lot of people who do want to continue on afterwards, and this way, it gives them that opportunity.
Okay. Board members? I don't want to take up all the time.
Thank you for putting this together. Some of my questions are, like, I might already know the answer to, but I just am asking you to share. So, what qual, what would classify a student as a newcomer? Not just you're new to the United States, but there has to be a language component or a language barrier, correct?
So, it would be a WEATA Level One. It's somebody that just recently come to the United States, within a year.
So, we're assessing them with the WEATA?
Correct, right. When a student first gets here, they get screened. And then, every February, March, they have to take a test, which is called the WEATA test, the access test, and that determines what level they are.
And that level, those levels are one through five, one through six?
One through four.
One through four? And those determine the level of services that a student might get. What does a newcomer day look like? If we start an elementary program, a newcomer elementary program, what does that look like for the child?
What does it currently look like?
What would it look like?
So, it would be like half a day working on your basic skills, getting them literate, getting them the foundations for reading, writing, and math. And then, for the other half, rest of the day, they would go into the regular classrooms. They would still have your, your music and things like that. So, it's half intensive, and then the rest of it, they would be with their peers.
Do we have something like that right now for middle and high? Sort of?
Sort of.
Sort of?
Sort of.
Okay. Sort of, but you're saying we, we really ought to step it up?
Yes. We really do in order to be able to, really to be able to address what the needs are. Right now, we kind of, we do, I think we have done a great improvements in the last few years, but our numbers have increased so much, just in a couple of years, that's more like a Band-Aid.
For students, so I've taught before, and I've, I had a newcomer student, came straight, spoke zero English in fourth grade. And that was really challenging for him. It was quite a challenge, and so I'm pleased that we're going to have something like this or be thinking about offering something like this. My question also is, when we talk about a newcomer program, we're going to bus some kids to certain key locations is the proposal. It seems like it would be kind of a revolving door kind of program. Is that kind, right?
It would be.
Like, you come in, you get some basic skills, then you pop back out to your homeschool.
Right.
And meanwhile, with the turnover and all of the growth that we're seeing in the county, you're envisioning, you know, you're here three, six months, maybe a year, depending on the needs of the students, and then you pop back out and you're in the regular education setting with English language services.
Correct. And this would also help the teachers because a newcomer takes a lot of more time than a Level Three, Level Four. So, this would allow the teachers in the schools to be able to concentrate more on the upper levels.
Okay. Thank you.
That would provide them a half-day there, intensive, I'm, school. I guess imagine, I imagine like maybe a central location where they would come to, is that correct?
They would be there all day.
All day.
All day, yes.
Until, until we see that they've improved and they can go out to their homeschool.
Correct. And for the elementary level, it usually does not, they're, they're like little sponges. It doesn't take them very long to be able to acquire those skills.
I love that idea.
Thank you.
I would just like to add, in January, I went to your EL workshop that you guys had, and that was really, really awesome to hear from the teachers and see what was going on, learn about the programs a little bit more, and to hear from you guys what your concerns were. And I think there's a lot, like, this is, this is big-picture stuff right here, but there's a lot of small-picture things that I think we can work with you. And I was so impressed by all of you guys. So, that was, that was really cool. And I do, you know, I'm concerned now, and I see there's a lot of opportunities for our super newcomers, right? The, you're, there, there's newcomers, and then there's kids who, like she was saying, are seventeen, who come here with no skills and need those skills here and, and have to learn a whole new way of life. So, I think that we have a really big job here to help these kids. So, thank you, guys.
So, for the middle and high school, they would be based at MTC?
We haven't. I left that open.
Okay. Because it says this program would be a full-day program based at MTC?
And that is, that's a suggestion, but it's just, it was an example of where. It's someplace that would be neutral.
Okay.
I think the main thing would be in a location that is, that is not designated for, for discipline reasons or anything like that.
Right. But in, in the elementary schools, a newcomer program would be at the elementary schools?
It would be at one of the elementary schools, yes.
Okay. And so, I noticed too that it said, you know, for those students specifically, the middle and high school that are in the newcomer program, the goal really is to teach them to be literate in their primary language. And it says as well as survival English.
Yes.
What, what's the goal for elementary? What's our end goal for them? I don't want to teach them survival English, like?
At the elementary level, the newcomer program, I was, my family now, we were the first EL students in Rockham County. So, I still remember, just survival English, you need to be able to feel like you can survive in every day to be able to learn. So, survival English on the elementary level, it's simple things like, where's the bathroom?
Right.
May I go, you know, I'm hungry, can I, things like that. And then you add, you keep adding to it. Research shows that a child, if they're literate in their primary language, especially Spanish and English because they're so similar, they can actually become literate in English a lot faster. So, that's why I said that become literate in their primary language because ultimately, that will help them become literate even faster in English.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that for elementary, like, our goal is not to just teach them just to survive and get by, knowing a little bit of English, but for the goal to be to teach them English. Because we are still largely still an English-speaking country, even though I know, you know, I know we have tons of Spanish-speaking people, but I just, I want them to have the best.
They, they were, no, the goal is to make, to give them the tools they need to be successful. But our EL teachers, they are phenomenal. They do everything. But one of the first things they do do when they, if somebody, we have a newcomer, is to give them the vocabulary words that they need so that they're not sitting in the classroom worried about, how am I going to ask to go to the bathroom? How, I need a drink of water? So, those kinds of things, they need to learn also. And then we keep adding to it. It's a process, and you never stop learning. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Mrs. Alicia Carol Clark, it's just such a privilege to have you over our EL. And I'm, it's, it's, I believe it's a great position for you being there. Thank you so much tonight, coming and presenting, as well as Mrs. Abernathy, coming and giving us this information so we could think about what our next steps will be. So, thank you guys so much.
Thank you all for taking the time to listen to us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda tonight is Drug Prevention and Education, RCPS. And Mr. Rice, I think, has a presentation for us. Welcome.
Hello, Chair Cross, school board members, Dr. Shiflett. My name is Sheldon Rice. I'm the Coordinator of Health and Physical Education for Rockham County Schools. Thank you for the opportunity to come and talk about our Division's Drug Prevention and Education Program. I appreciate your interest in this topic, and I'm happy to share what we're doing. As the saying goes, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. It is our goal to educate students on the dangers of drugs and substance abuse in a developmentally appropriate way. There are forty-eight health SOL standards that touch on substance use and abuse in grades six through ten. I will not read through them all. However, I would like to try to summarize the themes of those standards. If you would like to take a look at the health standards, they in the curriculum framework are linked at the bottom of the slide. The standards include the importance of choosing a drug-free lifestyle, facts about various types of alcohol, tobacco products, cigarettes, spit tobacco, vaping, et cetera, drugs, prescription opioids, fentanyl, barbiturates, cannabis, hallucinogens, methamphetamines, cocaine, et cetera, shortened, short and long-term health effects of the aforementioned substance, physical, mental, and social, laws and consequences of using various substances, signs and symptoms and causes of addiction and the impacts it can have, prevention measures, refusal skills, which are also taught in family life education. These are ways to say no to any type of risky behavior, influence of peer pressure, ways to get out of uncomfortable situations, media influences, et cetera. And finally, where to look for help and support for addiction. What does the prevention program look like in the middle schools? Refusal skills and understanding what addiction is are the foundation. A main focus is nicotine and tobacco products, cigarettes, spit tobacco, vaping, et cetera. This is often how substance abuse and use starts. Health effects of alcohol, other drugs, for example, prescription narcotics, including opioids, fentanyl, are covered. A highlight at the middle school is the partnership we have with Centaur RMH. They have a grant through the Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth to take tobacco and drug prevention programs to local schools. Mr. Ron Kopel is a respiratory therapist at RMH and visits each middle school, usually seventh graders, then some booster lessons in the eighth grade. He currently uses the Project Towards No Tobacco Program or Project TNT. It focuses on tobacco products, but he has added vaping instruction as well as information about fentanyl within the recent, because of the recent epidemic that has emerged. I just found out, however, that the grant got renewed for another three years, and he was looking to upgrade his curriculum. So, next year, he will be using the You and Me Together vape-free curriculum, and that is from Stanford Medicine Research Lab, their Tobacco Toolkit. There are six fifty-minute lessons focusing on tobacco prevention, especially vaping, cannabis, opioids, and fentanyl. What happens in the high schools? In ninth grade, all the substances are covered and their long- and short-term health effects. Students dive deeper into the dangers of addiction and the various substances, usually including some kind of anti-drug advocacy project. In tenth grade, there is a driver's education module that covers impaired driving, including alcohol, illegal drugs, vaping, THC, and prescription drugs. It goes into detail about how each substance affects the brain and the driving task. The curriculum also covers laws as they relate to the various substances, consequences if caught, and the importance of a designated driver. As we've seen increased vaping at younger ages, we are looking to add lessons on vaping, nicotine, and tobacco products in the elementary schools. We are looking at the elementary school lessons for the You and Me Together vape-free curriculum from Stanford Medicine Research Lab Tobacco Toolkit. It may sound familiar, that's what Mr. Kopel will be doing in the middle school. This would just be the elementary component of that. It is an evidence-based curriculum designed for elementary school students. It has two lessons, the first on addiction, nicotine, and vaping. The second touches on marketing of tobacco products. on marketing of tobacco products, environmental effects of e-cigarettes, and stress management. It is our hope to implement these lessons this spring if possible, or next year if we need to. So how do teachers stay current on various health topics? Health is a very dynamic subject. New research and trends pop up constantly. We do have health textbooks that are still used sparingly, but we also have several other resources to help teachers stay up to date on content. The Health Smart Virginia website is the health curriculum our teachers use to teach all the health top, all the health topics. It has lessons and instructional resources developed by Virginia health teachers for Virginia health teachers that cover our state SOLs. The Health Curriculum Framework is a document that has been created by the Virginia Department of Education. It connects the SOLs to essential understandings and essential knowledge and skills. This document also includes links to various government health agencies that have updated statistics, factual information teachers can use in their lessons. Kids Health for Teens, or Teen Health, is an educational website that has instructional resources on a variety of health topics, including substance use and abuse. They have lesson ideas, as well as worksheets for students. A lot of the Health Smart lessons would include some of those from the website. Teachers will also use other recent online articles and websites that are pertinent to their lessons. These next few resources are more recent resources that we use. Last spring, Virginia Attorney General Jason Mieres started his One Pill Can Kill campaign to combat the opioid epidemic effect in Virginia. Part of that initiative was to give educators tools they could use to inform their students about the dangers of fentanyl and other opioids. When this information was sent out, we shared it with our teachers, so they could begin to implement these materials into what they're already teaching. Although I believe they came out May ninth, so it's a little late in the year. Virginia Rules is an educational program designed to help edu, uh, excuse me, instructors, parents, and students understand the laws that apply to Virginia teens in their everyday lives. It has lessons on opioids and other substances. This is also the curriculum that our school resource officers use if they go in to teach lessons, and a lot of times there's some collaborations with schools to do so. Everfy is an online learning platform that has several courses or modules for students to use. In the, uh, in the realm of health, the courses are Vaping, Know the Truth, Alcohol EDU, and Prescription Drug Safety. These are modules that are about five or six lessons. Students can go through self-paced, or it can be teacher-led as well. Another way we try to keep our teachers current is through professional development to increase their knowledge and help them be more comfortable with the content. As it happens, tomorrow at Turner Ashby High School, our secondary teachers will hear from the Rush Drug Task Force, where teachers will hear about what the task force does, current drug trends, basic drug identification, and other resources for teachers. And finally, we know it's not just up to a student's teacher to educate them on the dangers of substance use, parents also play a large role in their child's decision to be drug-free. In November, Governor Glenn Youngkin signed Executive Order 28 to increase opioid use and abuse awareness, specifically fentanyl. Part of the order was for the Department of Education to create a document with prevention and educational materials for students, parents, and educators. We have linked this document on the Rockham County Public Schools webpage, uh, on the Information for Parents, Guardians, and Students page, under Student Supports. We are encouraging teachers to reach out to parents and make them aware of these resources, so they can educate themselves and have a conversation with their child. What questions do you have?
Thank you, Mr. Rice, first of all, coming tonight, presenting this to the board, and giving us an idea of what's, uh, being taught to our kids, and I, so I really appreciate you taking the time out and presenting this to us tonight. Board members, do you have any questions for Mr. Rice? Go ahead.
When we talk about sharing some of this at the elementary level, who do you envision or who is going to be doing these two lessons?
Yeah, that's a good question. I kind of stuck to the physical education side, so this would probably be something we would ask our PE teachers to incorporate into their curriculum at some point, unless there was another option to do that, but that's kind of where we're looking right now.
I would, I would say that's probably a good idea, just knowing that time, time, it's really hard to carve out time for things like that, when we talk about digital safety, drug safety, all of these things are all very important things, but we have limited hours in the day, so that might be a good fit, I was just curious, thank you.
You saying that tomorrow, you guys are going to be hearing from the Rush Task Force?
Yes, sir.
That's awesome.
Yep.
Thank you for reaching out to them and getting them involved and letting, I'm sure they'll let you guys know what they're seeing locally as well in our, in our community.
Yes, and I think that's important for our teachers to, you know, know what's going on with our students, so they can educate them of what's going on.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Any other board members? Ms. Kay?
Do you other, like, outside of just teaching curriculum or lessons, things like that, are you the guy that we would talk to? Like, do you have special speakers come in? Do you have you ever thought outside of just people that have been through the experiences? I just think it's hard for kids to learn just off paper sometimes, especially when we talk about topics that are this, you know, big.
So, um, a lot of, there's some bits of the curriculum that would have some videos and testimonials, is that kind of what you mean with?
Yeah. Could we have like some live people come in?
We could, we'd have to, I, I can look into that for sure. It would be working with some community, there's plenty of community help, folks that would, that would, that we could get in contact with. Currently, I don't know that there's a whole lot, we do have SROs come in, a couple of them will do some of those Virginia Rules courses with them, but not necessarily from the experience side.
Okay, would you be willing to work with school board suggestions for speakers?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome to come by, I'd be happy to chat anytime.
Thank you.
In regards to Executive Order 28, can we get an announcement, like, through our PR people to parents, because you only do PE classes, and eleventh and twelfth graders don't have PE, so if we could do something to get those kids, those students as well, that would be awesome. Thank you, and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, it's a great idea.
Would this be something we would loop in our school safety coordinator position in?
I think it's a great, yeah, I think it'd be a great opportunity when that position comes, we'll loop them into this as well, and use that resource from within us, was a great idea. Any other questions for Mr. Rice? Thanks for being out here late tonight and presenting to us, I really appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Moyers, on budget and planning. No? Calendar, sorry, come on up here, Ms. Abernathy, should've said, no, I'm next.
It's okay, I thought maybe you've already seen enough of me tonight.
No, no, you won't see more of you.
Chairman Cross, members of the board, Dr. Shiflett, thank you for allowing me to come back to the podium tonight and giving me this opportunity to talk to you about the updated version of the proposed 2024, 2025 school calendar, and you have a copy of this in your items to view. So following the January twenty-second School Board meeting, when I initially presented the proposed draft for the twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar, I sent this out to all families and staff members, receiving two hundred and fifty-six additional comments on top of the fifteen hundred responses from the December survey that we sent out to all families and staff. The calendar committee met a couple of weeks ago to review the most recent comments, and then made the following changes to the initial proposed calendar. As suggested by some of the feedback, February eighteenth is no longer Professional Development Teacher Work Day. We made February seventeenth and eighteenth to align with the November dates of fourth and fifth, where we split one day as Parent Teacher Conference, the other day is a county-led in-service day for secondary and elementary, and then they swap. So November, there's two dates there for November, uh, fourth and fifth, it looked like that, and then February seventeenth and eighteenth. So we read that a few times as some of our comments recently, and thought, wow, that was a really good idea, wish we would've thought of that. So we did make those changes. March tenth is now a school day, that was a Division in-service day, so we removed that day, it just, the calendar looked a little choppy between February and then March, at the end, with, with spring break coming up, so we did remove that day. Because we made March tenth the school day, the last day of school now is Wednesday, June the fourth, and we made that a one o'clock dismissal, so there's not a lot of favor out there for one o'clock dismissals, but there sure was for the last day of school. So, um, so we did make that a one o'clock dismissal on the last day of school, and by making Wednesday the last day of school, now the two teacher workdays are on Thursday and Friday at the end of that week, instead of Friday and Saturday, which I think would be a welcome change for that. This, this, this still gives a hundred and ninety-seven designated days for teachers to work, with a hundred and seventy-six instructional days, so that did not change at all from the initial calendar that I presented three weeks ago. This also keeps us aligned with Harrisonburg City, which is very important, as we share students in our MTC program, and for our families and students who may live in one division and work in another, maybe their, their students are in a different division. So we've worked very closely with Harrisonburg City to try to make sure our calendars are aligned as much as possible. We did choose not to move spring break to more forward in, in April, to coincide with the Easter holiday, as many felt it was too late in the spring, as March typically is a pretty high-discipline month, so people were, were pretty excited, like, like, let's just keep it at the thirty-first and that first week in April. A lot of the comments were, hey, spring break's in April, we're excited for that, even though it was the first week. Also, running spring break around the Easter holiday, that's about a week and a half or two weeks right before AP testing, AP testing is the first two weeks in May, those dates do not change, the AP College Board makes those dates, tho, those do not change at all, as well, so, and getting ready for SOL tests, they felt like spring break was just a little too late at that point in time. So of the two hundred and fifty-six responses we received, many felt that the, we start school too early, and just as many felt we start school too late, and we have a lot stating they still want to start school after Labor Day and before Memorial Day, which would be a tall ask. It was requested by a School Board member to consider a calendar starting after Labor Day, so in your packet, you will see where there is a draft calendar that has been developed to show you what it would look like if we started after Labor Day. So keeping the same, a hundred and ninety-seven designated days, a hundred and seventy-six instructional days, twenty-one workdays, two weeks off at winter break, which is very popular, one week off for spring break, which is also very popular, the first day of school would be September third, and the last day of school would be June seventeenth, again, that would be an early dismissal day. The two teacher workdays would be June eighteenth and twentieth, which sounds kind of odd, however, June nineteenth is a federal holiday. The SOL testing can be moved back, we can choose what windows of SOL testings that we would like to give our tests to our students, so we can move that window back to May twelfth to June sixteenth, that is indicated in the bottom-left corner of that calendar. However, again, the AP testing is set by the College Board, and their dates don't change, so we would be missing about two, two and a half weeks of getting ready for an AP test that our students wouldn't have. So in conclusion, we're currently scheduled to submit the final draft proposed school calendar for the 2024, 2025 school year to the School Board for approval at our next meeting, which is February the twenty-sixth. I respectfully request, if there are any changes to our current proposal, please let me know sometime this week or in the next ten days, we can make the appropriate adjustments, and that the proposed calendar will be ready for voting at our next meeting. So, do you have any questions for me at this point?
Any question, board members?
I just want to point out, with the ending in June sixteenth, eighteenth, that kind of timeframe, that also hits, usually 4H and FFA rotate back and forth, and one will be that week, and then the other, their state conventions are those weeks.
Okay.
So it would probably hit one of those.
I just want to say that I was the School Board member that requested after Labor Day. I only want it told to the public, because so many want it to, I mean, gosh, and we haven't probably done that for decades. I like it, but I realize what it does to the rest of the schedule, and so, you know, I don't know if people care about that it ends two weeks later into June, I don't know, but, you know, I got elected to do, and I ask what my constituents say, so I appreciate you putting that together.
Absolutely.
I mean, I know it's work, and so thank you for doing that.
My pleasure, absolutely.
I'm, I'm all about starting after Labor Day, so you got another vote, just keep on coming around, get one more of us, so. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Abernathy, again.
Since we're, what happened to Super Bowl? Nobody liked having the day off, just saying.
I didn't have the day off.
Yeah, my, I was thankful my kid was at home, because I had an early morning meeting, so, and there were problems in the lamb and barn, just say it, but we did kind of discuss that, and we, what happened with that?
So the next week, there, there were quite a few comments about President's Day is next week.
President's Day, Super Bowl.
It's a federal holiday, so we've kept that February date on the President's Day. I apologize, thank you, Ms. Laura, for, I didn't add that in there, it was one of the things that was brought up, and...
Just remember this time next year, you get President's Day instead of Super Bowl.
Yep, that's right. Thank you for reminding me of that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, so now, Mr. Moyers, is your turn?
All right, thank you.
First of all, I need to talk to whoever schedules these things, they keep putting me last. I'm always late on the agenda, and you have all these great things that people need money for, and then I get to tell you we have no money, which I don't enjoy. So, uh, good afternoon or evening, Chair Cross, Dr. Shiflett, members of the board. Tonight, I'm going to present to you the Governor's Proposed Budget from December twentieth, and how that affects Rockham County going forward. There will be a Senate and House version that will come out in the next couple of weeks, that will have some changes that we'll go over at that time, but this is what the state has proposed to date. So first, you will see our local revenues, the miscellaneous things, they pretty much stay the same, just with a couple minor changes. The next section will be the state revenue section, and what I want to point out is here at the top, you'll see it has our projected enrollment numbers, our ADM, so this year, the projected enrollment numbers from the state was eleven thousand, one hundred and twenty-three, which was very ambitious by the state, and we're not going to reach that, which directly affects our funding for the current year. So next year, they have reduced that back down to eleven thousand, seventy-one, we're at like eleven thousand and forty currently, so I do feel good that we'll reach that. The second piece you'll see that directly affects our state numbers are the composite index, and this is what is known as the locality's ability to pay. So last year, say it took a hundred dollars to run the school's budget, they said that the locality could afford thirty-six point seven nine dollars of that. Next year, they say that we can afford forty-three point four nine, which affects our state budget tremendously. So this is the first half of the state budget for, uh, the Governor's Budget for the next year, and what you'll see is just a lot of ins and outs. A lot of this happens quite frequently, but the total is the part that really matters. So if we go to the second page, and you see the subtotal of the state budget, it's a decrease of eight point four million dollars. Now, that's a little misleading, because that does include three point nine million dollars of the all-in-per-pupil funding that we received this year, and that was one-time money that we knew we weren't getting again. On the third page, you will see our federal revenues that we estimate for the next year, and for the most part, we expect those to remain relatively stable. We do think Title I is going to go down slightly, and then at the bottom, you'll see the last four items, CARES, ESTER III, the ventilation grant, the TSS grant, and then IDEA, six-eleven art funds, that was all COVID money that we've received over the past three years, so we knew that was going away, and we budgeted that accordingly, that was all used for one-time items that we knew we weren't going to roll into another budget. Then you will see the local share of education, at this point, this just shows a flat contribution from the county from last year of seventy-three, uh, seventy, seventy-three million, eight-hundred sixty-six thousand, five hundred and ten dollars. We've had, started having conversations with them, we know that this number will go up, we're just not sure of the amount as of yet. So in total, you will see that our revenue next year would be a hundred and sixty-eight million, five hundred and seventy-three dollars, and a hundred and ninety-seven cents, compared to a hundred and seventy-eight million, sixty-four dollars, eight hundred, or sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars, a decrease of nine point five million. to 178,64800, or 64,899, a decrease of 9.5 million. Now, we can back out the one-time funding of the ESER money and also the All-in-One Plan Virginia, so you have a net decrease of 4.6 million that we're, that we're receiving from the state that we need to make up just to get us back to last year. On top of that, the, um, there are some things in next year's budget that we have to do, so that weren't budgeted for this year, but we know next year, regardless of what we decide, that we have to add. So we're looking about a shortfall of just things, just to get us to last year and things I know we have to do of about an $8 million shortfall. Over the next couple of weeks, we'll be meeting with you all for your two-by-twos. We're hoping to schedule those at the end of next week. I'm on vacation starting Wednesday, so as soon as I get back, Caitlin and Dr. Shiflett will be scheduling those with you all. And then when we meet next time, we'll have an updated version of the state's budget and also what we think we can do expenditure-wise to start getting to March 11th, where Dr. Shiflett will present his proposed budget for the 2024, 2025 year. So I would be happy to answer whatever questions that you have.
Mail from last year?
Yes. It, it all gets lost in the numbers, but just, just if I took everyone's budget that was this year, and so I'm going to give you that again, and add the things that we have to add, like health insurance increases, um, the raise, the 2% raise that we did that the state doesn't fund quite all of that. Let's see what else. Uh, we have, we have some additional teachers that we're going to need for the redistricting process. We, we need 8 million just to do that. So all the requests that we have received, that would be funding zero of those things.
You mentioned the 2% raise. That's the 2% raise that we already gave.
Correct.
So.
This, that 8 million would include the 1% raise that we proposed with the budget that we gave you last time with the expenditures.
And what was our, what's our current local share? Percentage-wise? Like the state saying that we can afford?
Oh, so it was 36. It's gone up to 43.
No. What's our actual? The state's saying 43% is what the, the county could kick in, should be kicking in, but on, that's just on SOQ positions.
They give way more than that.
Yeah, it's way higher than, do you know? It used to be like 47.
I couldn't tell you the exact amount right off, but what I can tell you is we're in the top 20 couple in the state of how much they fund compared to other, other localities. So we're very well-funded from the county.
Yeah, so it's, it's more than?
Yeah, so if you look, if you look at the total budget of 168 million, there's 74 million of that, so they're roughly almost not quite half.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So to reach this, we're going closer to half, probably.
Yeah, yeah.
To reach this, we'll have to be over half, really.
Yes.
Wow. Okay.
And I really do appreciate our, our local government, Board Supervisors, helping us out so much and putting, um, so much money towards, uh, our public schools here in Rockham County. So, um, we've been in contact with a couple of Board members, uh, so far, and we'll continue to have conversation between School Board Members, Superintendent, Mr. Moyers here, and also our Board Supervisors going forward on our budget. So, any other questions, Mr. Moyers? I did try to get you, move you up a little bit on the, on the.
Oh, that's all right. And to be hon, so, Dr. Shiflett, we've been working on this for weeks. I mean, we do have ways to cut down that eight, that, I mean, we're exploring other options of what we can do internally to move some money around as well, um, just not prepared to present those this evening.
Right. Thank you, guys. And this is, this is things the public that doesn't see that School Board Members are doing behind the scenes as well, that you guys are working on almost daily, uh, with other personnel at Central Office. So thank you, guys, for the work that you're putting in behind the scenes to get us ready for next year, next year's budget. So this is a big line item for the School Board. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. That will conclude. No, it won't, sorry. I still got musicals.
Still have musicals.
Sorry. Mrs. Ford, come on up. I am not trying to bypass you. I really want to hear from you tonight, so thank you for coming tonight and waiting.
Oh, my pleasure, my pleasure. Uh, good evening, Dr. Shiflett and Board members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you all about our musicals tonight. I'm really excited for it. Musical theater, as an extracurricular opportunity, provides so many wonderful things for our students. They get to enrich their education with reading comprehension, dialogue and interpersonal skills, physical activity, group collaboration, emotional maturity, and so much more. It helps them to build their confidence by challenging them to take risks and explore their creativity. Musical theater can also build critical interpersonal skills with students using real-life experiences for them with teamwork, challenges, problem-solving, and leadership opportunities. Musical theater provides context for historical timelines, and so we're going to talk tonight about government and geography. In our musicals just this season, kids are getting to explore 19th century London, early 20th century Russia, Paris, New York. They're talking about the Great Depression, and they're even talking about Las Vegas in the 80s. So some fun stuff in there, too, that might not be in our history curriculum. Um, but we, we have so many wonderful things, so we want to talk to you about what those are. As we look at the lineup, the first month of our musical season is our high schools. So this weekend, we've got Broadway High School and East Rock doing, uh, The Addams Family and Sweeney Todd School Version. The week after that, we've got TA doing 42nd Street, and the week after that, we've got Spotswood doing Anastasia. As we move into March, we get more of our middle schools, so you're going to see those happening one per weekend, uh, doing Rock of Ages, Frozen Junior, The Little Mermaid Junior, and Annie Junior. And you'll see down there on the bottom, we also have some elementaries that do musicals, uh, which are really, really wonderful. They tend to do the kids' versions. I didn't want to advertise them too much because when I went to, uh, the one at Peak View last year, it was less than standing room. And so if you belong to those schools, please go and see their musicals, um, and if not, we'll try and advertise them some way. The one official one is 101 Dalmatians, um, but many of the elementaries do either a student-led or student-created musical, and that, so there's really wonderful things there. So as we go through the musicals, I thought I would tell you just a little bit about each one, just in case you are unfamiliar with them. The Addams Family is a story of love and family. They're a little bit weird, um, so you're going to see some kooky things on there, but it's a fun-loving comedy, uh, that's appropriate for the entire family. You can get tickets through that bitly, uh, and these are linked on the School Board, Board Docs, so that the public can access them, and I also sent them out to, I think, All News last week. Sweeney Todd, the school version, is, um, a tale about 19th century London and a man who was wrongfully convicted, um, through a government official is seeking vengeance. And there's some interesting things in there, right? But when it comes down to it, it's a story of humanity. Um, I wasn't super familiar with it, so I'll be honest. I went to, um, New York and I saw the real thing because I couldn't resist an opportunity to go to New York and see a musical. Um, I convinced myself it was research. And while I was prepared for some scary stuff, and I, I don't do scary movies, it really wasn't about that. And so what you're going to see with the school version is they've toned it down to a PG 13 rating, so it is recommended for audiences 13 up. Um, but they really take an artistic method of doing it so that it's not bloody, it's not gory, um, it's none of that, and it's really talking about humanity, um, the population community, how we see people in our community and how we work together with them. And so while it is a spookier adulter teenage story, um, it still has some wonderful life lessons in there. 42nd Street, we go back to, uh, the early 1900s in New York. We talk about all these infamous tunes. This is a classic, um, and you're going to hear a lot of songs that you might have heard in other ways that you might have recognized, um, like We're in the Money, Lullaby of Broadway, 42nd Street, of course. Um, and so it's just really good. They actually brought in a, um, dancer from New York City to come and coach the kids, um, and so we're really excited to see that production. Anastasia goes back to the twilight of the Roman Empire, not Roman, Russian Empire, excuse me, um, and again, is a story of love and family. As we go into the middle schools, we've got Rock of Ages. Uh, this is not the movie, so if you're familiar with the movie, this is a kids-friendly version. Um, they have toned a lot of the things down, so it's appropriate for all ages. Uh, my son is working in the, uh, crew for it, and I have been blessed to hear so many 80s tunes coming out of the Alexa. It's been fantastic. My house is rocking. Um, so that one's going to be really fun. We get into the Disney shows next with Pence Middle School doing Frozen Junior. Um, it has some new songs, so it's not just the ones that you'll know from the movie, but there's also some originals that were original to the musical. The Little Mermaid Junior is a classic as we go to Montevideo Middle School, um, and so we're really excited to see how they bring the magic of Under the Sea to a stage. And so you're going to see a lot of scenery as kids are playing with lights and colors. And finally, at Elkton Middle School, we've got Annie Junior, and that's going to close out our, our middle school season as the kids get to sing Hard Knock Life and, and go to all the fun of that classic musical. Um, musicals are so many things to our students. They started working way back. Uh, they had auditions, they've had daily rehearsals after school. As we approach the performances, they have Tech Week where they are there every day after school, sometimes until very, very late, and they're putting on this show, uh, with their love and their sweat and their tears. And so we just really hope that you get to go and see these shows. Um, I'm really excited for it. And that's our musical lineup for this year. Are there any questions?
Members have any questions?
I'm just super excited. Thank you so much for arranging for, for tickets for us, and, um, I, I'm looking forward to every single show. You were going through, and I'm like, oh, that, that school has an excellent program. Oh, that school has an excellent program. Guys, this, this is the best part of being a School Board Member, is going to the shows. So I highly, highly recommend it, and I highly recommend it to everyone. Catch a show, it's awesome. The things our students can do, it's great. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else?
Are we too late to get tickets for this weekend?
No, ma'am, just reach out to me by email, I'll figure it out.
Okay, thank you. Have you ever seen the Johnny Depp version of Sweeney Todd?
I have not. I don't do scary movies, so I, I try and stay away, but I was really excited about going and seeing it.
I was just curious. Well, he's one of my favorite actors, but yeah.
I'll look that one up.
Oh, the only question I have is how do you, uh, how, how do you get this information out to the public when it's, I think you said East Rock had your recommendation for theirs is 13 years and up for that? Because back, um, was it before Christmas break or after? I was before Christmas break, I think it was, went to Spotswood, saw Mean Girls. I don't watch Disney, don't know anything about Mean Girls, but I took my eight-year-old daughter, and that was not a good experience. We had to leave early for that, so, um, she was not, it was not for the, so what do you do for the public to let them know that, hey, this, this may have sexual window-windos, it may have bad language, it may have, uh, some things that are not good for younger kids?
Appreciate you asking that. So we try and be really transparent on the marketing, and I think that's something that we can always be improving on. So as you notice, on all of our posters and flyers, we try to make sure that we put the difference between a full version, so anything that doesn't have a junior or a kids or a school version after it, you're seeing the version that's on Broadway with no cuts. The kids that are playing in the pit orchestra are playing the instrument parts that you would actually see in New York. If it has anything other than there have been adaptations, kids and juniors especially have been made for the middle school audiences. School version for Sweeney Todd, for example, um, has been made for high school audiences in particular, so we try to be very careful with that, especially with, uh, East Rock's production. We've made sure and the staff and administration there have been very clear to put on all of their, um, uh, shoot, I'm losing.
Advertisement?
Advertisements, thank you, uh, rated for kids 13 plus. And we encourage anybody to, to always look, um, and ask questions, and we're happy to, to help with that. If you have suggestions, I would, I would love to be.
My suggestion would be not do plays that are 13 and up because I think you miss out on so, so many more kids that want to come into the community, want to come and can bring their kids and see those things. So that would be my only suggestion, is that they consider not doing plays that are either have sexual window-windos in there or, uh, and that aren't for, you know, 13 and up age range, uh, because I think you'd, you'd have a lot of, a lot more people coming to these plays in the community excited, uh, to see them. So that'd be my only recommendation for that. So, uh, and I guess my last one would be Dr. Shiflett, and, and maybe this is yours, but what's the difference, um, you know, if an athlete goes, uh, in, uh, on the basketball court and he cusses on the floor, he's, he's, I'm subject to a technical foul, uh, or some type of penalty within the sporting. We don't allow cussing, but at our plays, we do allow, uh, them to use profanities. So what's, how do we mix that with our, our student conduct policies and things like that? Just a question I've been pondering.
I mean, it's, it's a good question, uh, Mr. Cross. I'm, to be honest, I can't say I have an answer for you right now. I do know, um, that in talking to Mrs. Ford about some of the productions, they, they have some, they do some editing, but yet they have some restrictions as well as, as how far they can edit and what cuts they can make. But it's, it's a good question, you know, to bring up, to say, at what point do we say this is permissible or, or this is not permissible?
Yeah, I just, I think it's, I definitely think it's just something that we need to look at as a school division. Again, I brought my eight-year-old daughter, uh, to see the play, and although, uh, the kids did a fabulous job in the play, I'm, thank God that she was eight and she didn't get a couple of the, of the sexual window-windos that were in the play. And so I was disheartened by that because she was excited to go with Daddy to see a play, and I was excited to go to the play and see it. So we had to leave early before even intermission, and I took her and got some ice cream, but we had a good time. So it's just important for, right now, for us to be able to advertise to the community, you know, if this is a 13-year-old and up, then we need to really make sure the community knows that, so we don't have other dads bringing their daughters, uh, to plays like that. So thank you for all you do. I look forward to coming to all the plays, uh, and seeing them, so thank you for all that you do for our students.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I think, uh, in your packet, School Board Members, you have tonight, um, you have in your packet your financial review for the January 2024 school budget. So for that's for you to look over and to, um, ponder over that, and as we've been doing with the school budget request over the last couple of, um, well, over the last month, we've been doing that. So, uh, any other questions on that? All right, well, that will lead us out of our informational items tonight, so thank you for those who presented. We appreciate that. I don't know whether your boss said you could leave or not, but I'm, if it's okay with me, but it's, it's his call. Um, we will be going into our public comments at this time, and let me get my list ready. And at this time, before we get ready to go into our public comments, if you are a student and you've come and you need your form signed and you need to get home, you can do that at this time before we go into public comments, um, because I'm a dad, too, and I don't like my kids to be out too late, uh, at night. So we'll take a minute. If you're a student here, need your form signed, you want to go, we can do that. See any? Okay. All right. Is there one? Come on up. It's important as a dad to be able to, I think it's nine o'clock, so if you need to go, you can go. If you'd like to stay, you can stay. All right, first on our list tonight, uh, for public comment, looks like it's a student, Elver, I'm sorry. Did I pronounce your name correctly?
It's pronounced Ivor.
Ivor, okay, thank you. You can have three minutes, I'm sorry.
My name is Ivor. I'm a senior at RCPS. I'm appalled at the lack of compassion and consideration for the students' well-being and safety as of late. Since the passing of a most undignified policy, I have witnessed firsthand the effects on students' physical and mental health. I can reiterate and restate everything until I'm physically unable, but it often seems that I'm speaking to a brick wall, one of ignorance and pride. As I stand here this evening, I recount moments of hypocrisy and irony. This policy will cause a decline in academic performance as well as student involvement in activities. To hear the wrong name is enough to throw To hear the wrong name is enough to throw a student off for hours and even days. It could be argued that it's an individual choice, but that claim cannot be more false. This is an emotional, mental piece, and it goes so much deeper than what is presented on the surface, speaking from the experience of those around me. This model policy is doing the opposite of what has been claimed to do. It has increased the likelihood of a student experiencing harassment or bullying in a school environment or abuse at home. The school climate is already growing to be hostile toward queer students through carvings on bathroom stalls to hateful words viewed at them. No student should have to feel fearful of their safety in school. So evaluate the example being set to students. Are they being taught to treat peers with kindness or respect despite their differences? Or are they being taught to single out and hurt those who are different from them? All it takes is being a good person and to treat people with respect. Treat them the way you'd want to be treated rather than making it one-sided. Do not expect respect if you are unwilling to give it. It's not a matter of the inability to, it's a matter of being unwilling. And when I see carving saying down with the F slurs, as I'm sure you can guess what that last word was, I think of how my peers look at queer people such as myself and others that I know. They see us, and that is the first thing to come to mind for us to disappear or to be taken down in their words. And that also goes for some of adults in our community as well. Everything is moving backwards into a dark and dangerous time. So do not dare to tell me that it doesn't happen when it is unfolding in front of us. I am a son, a brother, a friend, a partner, a musician, among many other things. Everyone in this room has a place in someone's life, if not a place in the world itself. We all have our faults and accomplishments. So why should anyone be treated like less for the mere fact that they don't fit into your deluded ideas of what the world should be? That shouldn't have to be put on students, especially when things are already difficult as it is. So how would this policy affect or better a student's education? How will it benefit them as teenagers growing into young adults? How will this preserve a sense of dignity within a student when they are being forced to go back into the closet in shame or perhaps even forced out when they are simply not ready? I'm not here to change your beliefs, but I'm here as a voice for not only myself, but for so many other students who are being put down by this policy and those choosing to implement it. I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Al. Appreciate it. Thank you, Al. Next on the list is Kirsten Beechy. Hi, Ms. Beechy. At 30 seconds, still be a little beep beep. That gives you an idea that you have 30 seconds left for, all right, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm here to talk about books, and I've already written to you all about the importance of representation, that children and teens can see themselves in our library books. And tonight I want to tell a story. So recently, my daughter Irene was really excited about the Mars habitat she was designing at Mountain View Elementary. And I remembered a book I read a few years ago called The Martian, about a man stranded on Mars, finding ways to survive by using science. And we agreed it would be our next read. So I grabbed it off the shelf, opened it to the first page. The first line had the F-bomb in it. And did I mention my daughter is nine? So I looked at Irene. I looked at the book. I talked it over with her and we decided she could handle it. For a month or so, we learned about science, courage, survival, Mars, and we learned about cuss words. We didn't read the words aloud because her sister's still at a stage when she might repeat something in inappropriate space. But she could read over my shoulder and I said, I will explain anything you have questions about. So here are some of the things we learned about cuss words. We learned that the words that used to shock people the most were profanities, words that referred to sacred things like damn. Growing up, I wasn't allowed to use the word gosh. It was too close to taking the Lord's name in vain. And now I think taking the Lord's name in vain is maybe a little more like using God for your own purposes. Like the guy who told my friend, you have to marry me. God told me. We learned about the vulgarities that you can get into trouble for in certain contexts, the ones that refer to bodily functions. Why are those bad? She wondered. Well, I wasn't sure. I said it was cultural, but our bodies are good. What happens in the bathroom is okay, and that sex is an important part of life. Mom, are there any words that really bother you? I thought about it. As a white lady, I'm never going to say the N-word. I don't have the right. If someone uses the word gay or retarded as negatives, they'll hear about me. They'll hear from me. I am offended by words that are used to denigrate groups of people, but it doesn't want me to take books off the shelves that have those words. If we're reading a classic like Huckleberry Finn in school, I think teachers can talk about the word, lay some ground rules. I think librarians can find additions that give some context. I think it's our job as a community, especially as parents, teachers and librarians, to contextualize that material for students. When we lock up books, we are abdicating that responsibility to their friends or to television or the internet. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beechy. Next on the list is Rex Fritz. Okay. You have 30 seconds and I'm at, I'm sorry, we stop it. At 30 seconds, you'll hear a beep and then it will let you know that you're almost done. You got three minutes. Go ahead.
Good evening, school board. It's nice to finally be given a chance to speak. I originally wanted to talk today because of my concerns with the policies you all have passed regarding both my transgender peers and the books in our libraries. However, I'm sure by now you've heard several arguments against policies. So instead, I would like to vent my frustrations as a student. So I'm a teenager. I think I can speak for most of us when I say nothing happens at school without words spreading immediately. If there was really pornography in our libraries, do you really think that the news wouldn't have spread like wildfire before the policies have been passed? If you're going to ban our books because they have gay people in them, at least say it directly. Because it's a little childish to, to, sorry, hold on, let me, what did I say? Little childish, not owning up to your own actions, you know? I don't want to hear excuses saying that you're doing it to protect the kids because if it were really about, if it were really about protecting us, then why haven't you asked us what we think about it as students? I would like to think that our opinions as the students you're allegedly supposed to protect matter just a little bit more than the parents or just grown adults who either don't have kids in a public school setting or at all. I'd also like to, to speak on behalf of all the queer students who can be here with us today because we know why the school board has passed these policies. You're not actually concerned with preserving parents' rights about what's taught in the classroom, and you're definitely not concerned about protecting kids from whatever you think is being taught in class. You want to erase every gay and transgender person, person from our schools, but I'll let you in on a little secret. You can't. You can pass on, you can pass as many policies as you want, but you'll never be, you'll never be able to erase me, my friends, or any queer student from Rockingham County schools. We will continue to exist in this area because we are strong. And we, we will take immense pleasure in knowing that our presence alone is enough to infuriate you enough to pass all these policies banning us from existence and calling us pornographic. I think I've made my point, so I would just like to ask for you guys to find the timeout corner so you can think about what you did. Oh, P.S. It's probably not the best idea to point out security issues regarding our schools while a man who's been arrested for trespassing is sitting in the audience right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Rex Fritz. Next on the list is Michael Stimple.
Thank you, Chair Cross and board members and Dr. Shiflett. Let justice roll down like waters and righteousness like a mighty stream. Those ancient words resonate strongly with me. They were uttered by the ancient prophet Amos, who was exiled from his community for his unpopular prophecies and warnings. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. uttered these words in his famous, I Have a Dream speech in August of 1963 when calling for full civil rights of black and brown folks. They can be found in the Old Testament of the Christian Bible. Reverend G.T. Gillespie in his 1954 pamphlet entitled, A Christian View of Segregation, cites multiple passages from the Christian Bible to justify racial segregation. Fast forward to today and you have those who want to begin public meetings with a public Christian prayer also being those who want to single out and segregate trans kids. Like their segregationist forefathers, they use the Christian Bible to justify their bigotry. The same governor who led a Christian prayer at his inauguration oversaw the creation of model policies that were intended to specifically target trans kids. How can a great man like Martin Luther King Jr. use the Bible to justify the liberation of all people? And others use that same book to justify their bigotry? I find it interesting that many who claim to believe in the whole Bible don't actually believe in the whole Bible. For example, I have never received a holy kiss mandated by Paul's First Letter to the Corinthians from anyone in this room claiming to be a Christian. Speaker of the House Mike Johnson, when asked if he believes, what he believes about the world, said, well, go pick up a Bible off your shelf and read it. That's my worldview. This terrifies me. Does that mean he celebrates Psalm 137:9 that says, happy is the one who seizes your infants and dashes them against the rocks? I sure hope not. But that is the problem with pulling random passages out of context, which is exactly what is happening here with the temporary banned books. The irony is if the same criteria of violence and sexual content is applied to the Bible, which is in 13 of RCPS's libraries, it would have been included in the banned list. Anyone who actually reads the Bible know that it is chock full of violent and sexual content. It is a reflection of the human experiment, experience. So of course it does. It has episodes of genocide, incest, rape, gang rape, genocide, and a dowry of 204 skins from dead soldiers, just to name a few. So if our school board is serious about banning books with sexual and violent content, the Bible should be included on that list. So I'm, my question is this, will you be consistent applying your criteria for banning books? Is this what you want? I'd also like to remind the board that it likes to mention that it speaks for the majority of parents that racial segregation was the practice here in RCPS at one time and was supported by the majority of the population in this county. RCPS did not integrate its schools until 12 years after Brown versus Boarded Education, the Supreme Court decision that led to the integration of public schools in Virginia. Instead of banning books and singling out trans kids, I call on the board to let justice roll down like waters and righteousness like an ever-flowing stream.
Thank you, Michael Stimple. Next on our list tonight is Marvin Weaver.
Good evening, school board members, Dr. Shiflett. Let me just say first, it's just been an honor. It's been really good to watch you guys do your work. I'm just reminded that's what you're really here for. So it was refreshing. What I came tonight to say was I want to express my gratitude to all of you for staying true to what you said you would do during your 2023 campaigns. In the last four years, something happened in Rockingham County. We, the citizens, woke up. We watched in disbelief as the policies of gender dysphoria, pronoun confusion, rental rights being undermined, among other things, were being promoted. So on November 7th, we, the people, went to the polls and we voted for change. You are that change. Please don't forget that. You've only been on the job for a little over a month and already you're being blasted and disparaged by a loud vocal minority. We knew it would be this way, and I think you did too. If you didn't, you know now. So what is this egregious sin some think you are guilty of? Well, it's your support for traditional godly and moral values that have served this country and our communities well for over 200 years. Now we have some people who have mounted an all-out assault on these values. I'd like to quote some statistics from a website called Statista.com. In 2022, among those who call themselves transgender, 80% considered, just considered committing suicide. I was shocked by these statistics. 40% attempted suicide. This is an alarming and disturbing statistic. And the people pushing this want us to accept and codify this? I think not. I wish we weren't so divided, but we are. We're either going to stand up and preserve the moral integrity that this country was founded on, sorry, which was based on Judeo-Christian values or choose to pull up anchor and drift according to the whims and desires of those who think they can change nature itself and have a positive outcome. This, in my opinion, would be a definition of insanity. In closing, I would like to say that according to the election outcome, a great majority of us stand with you. I think we have a great school.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Next on the list is Kate Lowe. Did I get your name correct? I'm sorry.
Good evening, for one. Hi, I'm there. Of Rockingham County. I'm a mother of three within the school district. I'm a native of this area and a graduate of Turner Ashby High School. Professionally, I'm a family nurse practitioner. And I work at JMU with 18 to 22-year-olds. And I also teach at Georgetown and have been adjunct faculty at UNC Chapel Hill. And a lot of my career has been looking at what it means to have a healthy community and what it means to be, to address the public health of different areas. And what I'm here to tell you, to talk about tonight is the fact that I've been to multiple school board meetings and I have listened time and time again to the LGBTQ community say that they feel targeted. And whether or not you believe with what they say or what they do, they believe they feel targeted. And what our research in the medical field shows is that this community is one of the highest-risk youth that we serve. And to counter the comments that were just made, the suicide rate in the studies of over 122 medical analysis, so it's a medical meta-analysis, which is a contemplation of multiple different studies. Study after study after study has shown that the suicide rate of this community is 20, is approaching 25%. So one in four LGBT community members will attempt suicide. That is based on medical research. We know that is true. And then when we look at what drives this, it's not the fact that they belong to this community. It's the fact that this community, that it's the fact that they feel that they are stigmatized and not accepted. What we know about human beings is that they need to be loved and they need to be accepted. And what they are telling you is that your policies are targeting them. And what this means from a public health standpoint is that in the course of your time on this school board, and all five of you represent the voice of every child in this school community, that there, it's not, it's not when, it's not if we will see a suicide of an LGBTQ2 student. It's when. And when that happens, I ask if you can look yourself in the mirror, if you can look at their parents, their teachers and their friends and say you did everything you could to protect them in their school community.
Thank you, Ms. Kate Lowe. Next on the list tonight is Tracy Zen. Tracy Zen. Tracy Zen. Okay, we'll move on. Next on the list is Victoria Putin. Victoria, are you here? Next on the list is Nathan Muselman.
Weird name. Muscle.
Muscle, sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
I just got to ask first, are there other people on the list after me?
Yes.
Because I've been real touched and excited really by what's been said already, and I'm much more interested in your more that than more me, I would say. I sent you guys a letter last week after the last board meeting, and I appreciate the responses I did get on that. I'd appreciate more responses from the rest of you. I like to hear what you had to say. But yeah, I think that I will turn this over to others. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker for tonight is Lois Paul. It's Lois Paul here.
My name's Lois Paul, and I'm a resident of Rockingham County. And I just wanted to thank you all, School Board, for, for all the job that you've done. You've taken on a considerable task to undo what has been done to the people of Rockingham. And when they voted, they voted you in. The School Board is a gatekeeper for, for the activities, policies, and the content of the schools. Solomon said, "Walk with the wise and become wise. The company of fools suffers harm." And a 20th century analogy to that would be garbage in, garbage out. So that's, in essence, what we're doing in the schools. You are the gatekeepers to keep the garbage out of our schools. If you were going to be, have a comparison, I would compare it to if you had a, an old, worn silver tray. It had possibilities, but needed to be cleaned up. Well, you're not going to, you could take that out, and you're not going to throw mud on it. You're going to, you're going to get the proper things that you, that you can use to clean it up. The same thing with our kids. You don't throw mud in their lives. You don't throw things, put things on there that would, that would be a detriment to the, to that utensil. You want to bring it back to its full potential. And in order to do that, you need the proper, proper cleaning tools, you need proper water. So, so same, same with our, our children. You don't need to be throwing rocks in their way and to make life harder for them. You need to keep them on straight and narrow way. And I thank you for, for the legislation that you've been putting forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lois Paul, and that will conclude our public comments for tonight. So I'm, next, next meeting, you can sign up. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You, yeah. Thank you. I'm, that will conclude our meeting for tonight. And School Board members, we do have reason to go into closed session. Do I hear a motion to go into closed session?
Are we just going to skip over questions and comments?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Question and comments? We're not going to skip over it. Thank you for calling me out. I appreciate that.
Well, I was just like, oh, wait, wait.
Yeah, no, I was like, I know I'm missing something. So questions and comments from our School Board members, and we'll start with you, Ms. Laura, sorry.
Just the usual, do we still have students here? I know a couple of you guys are students. I just want to say thank you guys for coming and thanks for, for hanging with us till the end, especially if your uncle has to drive you home. But thank you, thank you all that came tonight. That was the only question I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Laura, so much. Mrs. Hurst, anything? Nothing for you? Mrs. Cave, do you have anything?
I'm never going to get up here and preach, but there was comments made during public comment that opened, that opened it up, and so I'm just going to finish it up. I actually love the scripture that one of the speakers, when he talked about, "Let justice roll down like a river and righteousness like a never-failing stream." There's another part in Amos, that very same chapter, that says, "There are those who turn justice into bitterness and cast righteousness to the ground." And at Elkton Middle School in January of 2022, I talked about righteousness, so I'm very excited, actually, that it was brought up tonight because, and I'm going to say what I said then, is that righteousness is not religion, okay? It's not Bible-thumping. It's simply doing and thinking and being and saying what is right. And so one of the points of my campaign is that I was going to do right by the parents. Now, I am all about the teachers. I can't wait to get into student conduct. We need to take care of them. They need backup, okay? I love the students. I care about what they think about. I don't like the fact that they feel like they have to get up here and identify themselves as, as queer students because I think that the word queer means strange, and I don't think they're strange. So my heart goes out to them that they even feel like they have to identify that way. I wouldn't know them in public as any different than a normal human being. When people get up here and they quote suicide rates, it doesn't move me. 25%, 47%, I think 1% is too much for any group of people. So I don't get moved by that stuff because one person, one student gone, you're right, it would matter. So I just wanted to say in public comment that I'm just here for the next four years to do what's right by the parents with regard specifically to these books and keeping our students safe within the schools. I'm just here to do what's right, and I actually wanted to thank that speaker tonight for bringing that up and bringing that out in me. That's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Cave. Mrs. Burgoyne? You good?
I can follow her.
It's really good. Dr. Shiflett? You good?
I'm, I can't follow that as well because it was well said. I'm, so I won't. I'm, I'm, no, I'm not ready. I'm, but I do, I do appreciate Board Member Cave saying that tonight because that's simply what we want to do. We want to do what is right. And I've stated that time and time again, that that's what we're here to do, is to simply do what's right. And I believe with all my heart that passing Governor Yonkin's policy was the right thing to do. It was the right thing to do for all students, not just a few students. It was the right thing to do for all parents, not just a few parents. So I think what we did in passing his policy was the right thing to do. And I think we also did what was right in looking at the safeguards when it comes to our public libraries, our public school libraries, sorry, because there is a difference of expectation when it comes to public school libraries and public libraries. So thank you for pointing that out tonight. And I so much appreciate working with this Board. This has been an honor. It's been a highlight of my days. We put in a lot of work. We could get paid a lot of money to do this job. I mean, I mean, we're just rolling money to do this job. So excited every month when I get that paycheck to do this. I'm grateful to be elected by the people to do this job. I'm so grateful that, that the county trusted me, my constituents trusted me to do this job, the same way they came out and they trusted every single one of you to do what was right. And this has been an honor serving with you guys, and I look forward for the rest of my time on this Board, serving with you. And it takes a backbone like never before to sit up here and to do what is right. It takes a backbone, and I think America is tired of politicians. They want people to go in and do what they said they were going to do. I love the quotes of people that say, when they say they're going to do something, trust them. Yes, trust me. When I give my word, I'm going to do it. I think that my word is the most important thing that I have in my life, and not my money, not anything I've ever done, not my accomplishments, not my titles, not anything else is more important than my word. And when I give my word, I'm going to do it. I'm going to fulfill it. So thank you, Ms. Cave, for saying what you said tonight, and I appreciate, I think the meeting went very well tonight. Thank you for the central office staff that came out tonight and presented to us, and for the information that you shared, and thank you for the public tonight for coming out and sharing your thoughts as well. So now, we do have reason to go into closed session, and I am ready to hear that motion if you have one ready, Ms. Laura.
I move that the Board, in our closed meeting, for the purpose to discuss or consider the following pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A1, personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees, for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation. A2, one or more particular students specifically related to discipline and requests regarding compulsory school attendance based on the inability to benefit from education at the school that would involve disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning a student. And A3, the acquisition of specific real property for public school purposes, the discussion of such real property in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the School Board.
Thank you, Ms. Laura, for that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Any questions, comments? Hearing none? All those in favor say yes. Yes? All opposed, no? Motion passes 5-0. We are now in closed session. Thank you so much for coming out tonight.